Brought to my attention through a question that I received at a at an event where somebody came up to me and asked me why the board had canceled all of the athletics at the school. And evidently, there's a rumor kind of circulating in the community that the board doesn't support co-curricular activities. And I'm not sure if this is generated as a result of that we were unable to field high school basketball this winter, or whether it's generated because the girls are unable to field the softball team this spring. And nothing could be further than the truth. The board is very supportive of all of these co-curricular activities. We find ourselves in a position where we either don't have full participation because students cannot find their way to participate in those activities. But we recognize that they're tremendous value to the student, to the parents of those students, to the community who enjoys those activities, who finds great pride and awesome entertainment in what kids do in the sports arena. So I just want to kind of set that rumor to bed. And I thought it would be helpful, maybe even if, I don't know Seth, if you want to speak to it, or someone else would like to speak to the other activities that are being generated in the community to provide some outside for sports type things for kids volleyball and bowling. Do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Well, I was gonna do it during all of my, my piece when I get to, I mean, just do my piece now.
Alright, so you can speak to that then.
Yeah, I mean, either way, I can go now or, yeah.
But I would like to say, I know that the administration and Jeff and all of you have been very active in trying to recruit kids to participate in these sports. And we appreciate those efforts. So just wanted to put a rumor to the rest. Yes, Bob.
Perhaps it's appropriate when Seth, you gave your comments, but I'd be interested in hearing the perspective of Cheyenne, Nicole, and Angelica on this. If you guys have any insight into it, because you're obviously right, right in the, in the middle of it.
That's great.
And help to teach us a little bit about this.
Appreciate that. That's, that's a great suggestion. Thanks. Okay, moving on then. I'll turn it over to Chief Superintendent.
Thank you, Mary. I, we just finished up a finance committee meeting. I am happy to say that the superintendent's budget has now been approved to become the board's budget. That budget will be coming to you shortly. We've just got to make a couple little tweaks to it. I will work on the letter that's going to go out to the community and sort of attach that letter to the budget, put it on our website so the community has a chance to review it. And we will be bringing the budget to the board on April 11. I just recently applied for, I am very much a grant writer. When I see grants come my way, I, I, I jump on them. So I just applied again for a summer allocation grant for our extended year programming for summer for seventy-five hundred dollars. So that, that's an ESSA Title I summer allocation. So I'll let you know how we make out with that. I would like to extend a sincere thank you to Seth for all of his hard work and creating Portrait of a Learner Initiative to our district. There's been two meetings so far. Really, really interesting conversations that we're having. It just, I, I, I'm really excited about where we're going to end up with this. And it was just, the last meeting that we had was just really, really, it was really wonderful. Rowan is nodding her head. She was there. And Seth, you did a great job facilitating that.
It was awesome.
Yeah. I want to thank the board for supporting our Ski Tuesday and professional development time. That's coming to an end. The, the teachers worked really, really hard on those early release days at noon time. And you're going to see some of the work that, that they did during that time. And our kids got to go ski. How lucky are they to have this opportunity? And how lucky were we to have the mountain support us in this and allow our staff to stay here and work together? Like, it's just been, it's just been phenomenal. I've been a part of a lot of ski programs in other districts. And Saddleback nailed it. They really nailed it. So kudos to Saddleback. And Joanne Dixon, I think she was a big part of facilitating that. And Seth, I know you were too. And so next Tuesday, we're going to go through our district-wide celebration up there. Let's hope the weather cooperates. And I'm looking forward to that.
Could I just make a comment or suggest that maybe a letter of thank you should go directly to Saddleback? From both you as superintendent, but also maybe me representing the board to thank them for, in a more public way for their, and Seth, from you also, thank them in a more public way for their support of Ski Tuesday and the things that they, they, they did to facilitate that happen. I think that would be really important for us to do.
Agreed.
Mary, you might want to raise a small note. It doesn't have to be crazy. It's covering the Saddleback, but the Rotary, you know, always sponsors part of the bringing the reins out for the cookies and stuff and those things.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you for brought that up.
You might have to know, side of the side mentioning, Rotary needs for that.
Rotary does a lot of that kind of thing. And that's really important to recognize.
I just hope you can agree.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up.
And while we're thanking Rotary, thank you for bringing back our, our, you know, celebration of students.
We enjoy it. We enjoyed it as much as I think this would do. It was fun. It's a nice, nice launch.
Okay, the last thing that I have, I, I just want to let you all know that we, the district, is in the process of completing Alice training. I don't know what the Alice, what the acronym stands for. Do you, Seth?
Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate?
Yeah, yeah.
Say it again? Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate.
I'm so sorry to put you guys on the spot.
I looked at him when I said it because I want to make sure I got it right.
You guys are both trained in it.
Is there a song to that?
There's no song. We could probably make one, but.
So last, well, last Tuesday, we did a, we worked with the state trooper. And we did a two-hour initial training. It was awesome. We are partnering up with SAD fifty-eight, which is Mount Abram, that, that district. I think the Stratton School's also attending. Might be another school, I'm not sure. But we are going to sort of coordinate our Alice training there with also some professional development with other teachers and other districts. So we're kind of really looking forward to that. There'll be four state police there doing the trainings. They'll happen in grade span segments in the morning and in the afternoon. I think they're two hours each. And I believe Seth and Sean at some point are going to do a presentation with the board on that.
That'd be great.
It's going to be lengthy. So we want to just, we want to wait, maybe do it over.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
I know it's television, but I remember seeing some grandma Shelly was talking about some of this, some of the training across the country, some of it's a little bit more intense than others where it actually scared the crap out of kids.
It's intense. It's going to be intense.
So want to make sure we're getting a good balance on that. So.
I'll talk more.
Yeah, when the kids are there. But it just, you know, we don't want, we don't want children having emotional nightmares over it.
PTSD.
PTSD. That's what happened on this scenario. And so that's.
We raised that issue, I think, back, you know, Chris, when, when it first came to us. And I wondered, you know, with these mockups, you know, what impact that action was going to have on kids.
Some can, I know in some parts of the country they've gone a bit overboard with it. So I just want to make sure we're balancing out the reality versus the.
This Friday is just staff. And, and so that process, you know, with getting kids involved is kind of way down the road. But there's different levels of training depending on the grade span.
And I'm just asking you as your judgment cognizant of that for a second.
Of course. Yeah. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
I am going to go first this time because my stuff ties directly.
Seth, are you going to hand it over to the students first?
No, I'm going to go because my stuff ties directly with the conversation. So yeah, Alice, I think at some point the two-hour presentation that we did on Tuesday and Sean and I are doing it over the next three days, your staff missed it. It would be valuable for the board to see. Because you'll see a lot of the things that would happen during drills. There is Alice two point O. Sean and I went to a training with one point O. And it was more aggressive, I think. So they, it's more trauma-informed now. Really what it is, is it gives the staff and the students that learn it the okay permission to do what you have to do to be safe. Like, the old model is lock the door and hide in the corner and don't move.
Yeah.
This training is like, there's options and you do what you do, you can, to be safe and survive a traumatic situation. So I think it would be viable. I think we got a lot going on right now with the school year, but maybe a summer board meeting, those board members are interested, if came in like a couple hours early, we could walk through that presentation and you would learn a lot from it. And it is, like Georgia said, it's very sensitive to grade span, like the counter. You know, like the guy, the training we did, the perfect example of control, sorry, is the Ronald Reagan assassination attempt in the Secret Service. Swarm that person. You can teach high schoolers those techniques, like you swarm, everyone grabbed an arm, control the head, control the legs, control the hips. You don't do that with young kids. You know, you talk about, like when Sean and I talked to the young kids, you say, say a stray dog came into the school. What if we had a crazy raccoon in the hallway? What would you do? We'd lock the door, we'd hide, we'd get ready to throw things at them, you know? So it is informed by grade. So yeah, but I think it'd be beneficial for the board. And then, once you're ready to do the training, you know, the, our first training is, it's almost, he said it'd be better because to bring the parents in for a training. You know, invite some parents that have a concern to do some mock drills and, you know, just be very transparent and to do, do it in the right way. But it has been brought down, trimmed and formed. But it is important stuff and it just doesn't apply to school. You know, the movies, the mall, it's just about situational awareness and give it, knowing you have the permission to, to do what you have to, you know? And we go through the colors of awareness, like from white, you're unaware to black, you're panicked, you can't move. You know, and as you go up the spectrum, the more training you have, the better you can operate, like a red or an orange. So when you know there's a threat, it's imminent, and you have to react, the more training you have and the kids have, the more, better at the outcome. So it's a, it is good training. I'm excited for Friday to finally get some staff doing that.
One thing I'll add to, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And Sean's my, like, partner in all this.
Yeah, yeah, which is good to be a couple people to bounce things off. But the only thing that I'll add to is that there's a lot of other schools with the same exact training, like R C fifty-six, Gear Goes, gone through Alice, Gardner, Searsport. Most schools around the state, this is a very popular one. So it's not like we're just doing a, you know, random training.
Yeah, so that's.
No, I know, I did, I think you did, but.
Um, so Ski Tuesday, yeah, Ski Tuesday program is awesome. And it is like, we, you know, Saddleback gets some focus, but like Chris said, it was Rotary, Rangeli Health and Wellness, Rangeli Ski Scholarship, Rangeli Trail Center takes kids. There are a lot of partners in that. So we'll thank you. I had an idea of doing like a video with the kids, thank you.
That's great.
And we can do letters and stuff. So yeah, so we got canceled. There's a South Branch needs a part. So the South Branch did not run, so we had to cancel yesterday, or today, today. That's where my week is, on Tuesday. Um, we're looking at next Tuesday, like I want, it's yes, we're going to do it, but still with some like, ooh, because a lot of things at play. Mountains shift hours to ten to five starting Monday. So I have to look at my schedule, see if it works. There is a number potentially of ski school personnel that go home this coming weekend. That staff is down. So I just want to make sure, I just, there's some pieces, it's like a yes, but let me figure some pieces out. To make sure we can do it safely with everyone. So. But yeah, it's been a wonderful year. It is really amazing. Like, you know, we're going up. The kids are in the program, get paid for it. Any kid that skis but hasn't been up this winter, but knows how to ski, Rangeli's Ski Scholarship covers them. Call Matty. Like, I got six staff that want to ski that day. They don't have a pass, no problem, bring them up. It's just they really take care of us, health and wellness. We get pizza. Yeah. And the Trail Center, we're going to have a bunch of kids there. One thing we're doing this year is if you don't ski, you go into Trail Center. Yeah, it's going to be a good day. I just got some pieces to figure out. That's all. The PD on Friday at fifty-eight, we do have two of our staff, two groups of our staff doing stuff. So Rita is doing two workshops on coding in the classroom. And then Mr. St. John and Sean are doing Chat G P T presentation for their staff. Implications, because that stuff is very real now in the classroom. It's gone from a month and a half, two months ago to be like, what is this? To now, like, people are using it. And it's, if you haven't created a Chat G P T account and tried it, you really should. Like, go home, create an account, say, write me an essay on anything. And in like fifty seconds, you're going to be like, wow. Okay. Oh, Quebec. So the Quebec trip date, you approved this trip last meeting. It was scheduled for the seventh through the ninth of June. It is now May twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth. We are having a serious bus driver shortage in the spring. Kevin Bamfield is, I think, has got a new job, so he's not going to be in play. We have somebody else that's doing some stuff, so it's going to be Jeff and Tony. Um, I think that's it, driving bus. So we are going to be skeleton crew. We're doing everything we can to make everything happen. If there's white buses, get here soon. That would be great. But yeah, so that's why we had to move it. We had no transportation in June. We just couldn't possibly get the kids there. So that got moved. Portrait of a Learner is going outstanding. Thank you, Georgia, for that. Thank you. Last meeting was good. We had like nineteen people. A couple people couldn't make it, so we're over twenty when everyone's there. We started to narrow down our competencies. Which is, you know, it's all of a sudden taking shape, just like that. I went to the students today. And we would really like their help in creating our graphic. So we want to get a student committee together to get some mockups, to bring to the design team for picking up, like, picking what the final graphic will look like. So that's going well. I'm excited about it. Miriam Amami was nominated for Franklin County Teacher of the Year. She has decided to continue on in the process. So I submitted my letter of approval and recommendation on Monday. So she's going for it. It's a lot of work. You know, Shelley, my wife, went all the way to the final eight and it just keeps getting more and more work. And every time, I remember you get an email and you sit, she'd sit there and go, whoa, is it worth it? So it is a legit, it's, it's an excellent professional development reflection piece on your practice. It really is. It makes you dig into who you are as an educator and pushes you, you know, to work on that. So that's really exciting. For her, I'm glad she said yes. A lot of, some teachers don't. They're just like, no, I'm good. Thank you for the recommendation, but I don't want to do it.
Seth, can I ask you a quick question? When is that last P O L G we were able to do?
Um, the third one is on May third.
Third one is on May third?
Yep. And that's, uh, we're going to bring, we're going to finalize our competencies, bring the mocks from the student body, hopefully for the graphic. And then kind of finalize that piece. And the last meeting is more of like, here's the final product. Now what do we do next? How do we make this work?
I know it's a little late for the first day of conflict, but the second, I want to be there at the third. Is there any value in any other board members being at that last meeting, even if they missed the first two?
Yeah, I think you can definitely come and you just might have a lot of questions. I can preload you as much as possible. If you're interested in coming, we can meet. We did a lot of the final selection. We're going to refine our selections. But yeah, anyone can come and look at the mockup.
I just would encourage you to try to be there because it's a really wonderful dynamic conversation. I'm sure, it was the first time I was able to be there. And I'm sure the second one was even more engaging than the first one, from what I understand.
It was good. And like, we're coming, like, the big things, like adaptability, problem solving, critical thinking, communication, empathy. It's all these things we thought were going to rise to the top, aren't. Like, it's, it's interesting. Like, the tech piece, you're like, oh, tech's going to be number one. They're like, oh, wait, tech's just, it is every, it's everywhere.
Tech's already embedded in all these looks.
Yeah.
Uh, so Seth, I was just, sorry, uh, I'm Bob, you see, I was getting your number from Chris Farmer.
Exactly.
Yelling at people with my phone.
I can give a little, you want to get off here?
I think, so, you giving my number out here? I know it's highly confidential. So in, in the interest of helping you kind of fill the gap next Tuesday, we might be able to do like a little ski patrol thing for some of the kids.
Okay.
Uh, we used to do something like that, where we used to come to the school and go into the classrooms with a backboard. And we'd pick a conscript and, and tie him down and just kind of show them what it was like and some of the things we did. There's no reason why we couldn't do some kind of like an on-hill demo with a toboggan and things like that. It's, and, and part of this is a little bit selfish because we are always looking long-term ahead to pick up especially anybody local who skis really well, who might be interested in becoming a YAP, a YAM adult controller sometime in the future.
Yeah.
So this might serve a couple of purposes.
Yeah.
That's great.
So let's talk about that and see if we can make that happen.
In fact, this weekend, one of our YAP controllers finished the top ten. She finished in the top ten up all in the week.
Wow.
So.
Oh, okay. I never had this one say.
Lady sent in a terminal.
Whoa, one last, oh, one last thing. Okay. Um, yeah, so the sports, spring sports, I don't know, you guys going to talk about winter at all, but finish the ski season or anything?
I have it briefly, Miss Main State Team.
Yeah. So she made that, the main state team out to shootout, but had a wonderful time. We went all the way up to Workin', six hours from home. I tried to shoot some video up there and send it home so people could see. They had a, a great time up there. We were a small team, so we didn't really place, but it was a really cool experience to travel up there. And then Breezy and Mimi made the shootout. They went to the shootout at Black and then Breezy continued on to the state season. So competed last weekend. Yep. At Benson's Luke Hammond, I think, that we had somebody make the state team.
Do you want to comment on the volleyball?
Come in there. Yep. So now, spring sports. Yeah, so with baseball and softball, softball, the signups, I think, Lindsay's here, I think we had less than half. We had like four or five kids sign up for softball. Just, we didn't have the numbers sign up. Baseball, we have the numbers. We sent out an urgent request today, like a final please to have a coach. We do not have a coach. We have the kids, but we don't have a coach. Jeff, we talked to Jeff, we're going to put the twenty-fourth. So what happens on Monday, pitchers and catchers start, but that's not like your official start. Like, the full team practice starts on the twenty-seventh. We need a coach, is where we're at.
March twenty-seventh.
It's March twenty-seventh. Yep, we need a coach. Yeah, baseball. Yep, varsity baseball. So we need a coach. And you know, like, it is difficult now. We were close in the winter, with boys' basketball. You know, there's a lot of people have all their reasons why. It's, I don't know all the answers. I do know that when I'm working, looking at N P A stuff, you've got Class B schools with three hundred and thirty kids in the high school that are going to A P A soccer because they can't field teams. And they have three hundred and twenty kids in the school. We have fifty-four. You know, I, I don't know what it is. We're trying. Like, we want baseball to happen, but you know, everyone's like, oh, we need coaches. Then we put it out, we need some people to say, okay, we're going to give this a try. And coach, because our former coach just can't, you can't, and it's hard here because a lot of the people that were interested in coaching were seasonal. So they're like, oh, I'm so busy in the spring. Really can't coach. And I think our numbers, if you look at our middle school programs right now, I mean, middle school basketball this winter was like, like a rock concert. It was awesome, you know?
Great group of guys, yeah.
Big groups of kids. Sean and I, Sean and I are with the middle school, boys, baseball. We got a wonderful group there. Um, we're going to have a full team. Kids are excited. We don't know, Lindsay is going to work with it, but we have the, the middle school group. Seems to be a big group of athletes. So I'm hoping that continues through. But it's a statewide, when you go to like N P A, like skiing, the M V C skiing, five years ago, mine was a freshman. Seven schools had like full teams. I think this year, there was three full teams. And I think next year, they're looking at collapsing the M V C into the K B C, K B A C. It's just everything. It's just, it's, I think, you know, games and, yeah, there's a lot of pieces. So, yeah, we're working it. Yeah, Chris.
Seth, would it help if we, you know, if they played varsity sports to have that, the credit that they need for athlete? Are they already able to do that?
We're looking at that. We've.
Because I, I was just thinking, some of the trade-off and say, okay, you know what, if I do the after-school sport, dance, or whatever it is, that I can get the credit for P E, so I can take something else academically to challenge. Because I think that maybe did a few people that were kind of on the edge. I don't know. I know it's, yeah, I know it's really tough. I think the pandemic really, really affected that. And then with the popularity with the, the ski team, it's, it's cyclical, like Bob said, I think Bob's been in this community a long time. It's, we've seen the ups and downs. But this is the first time I, I've seen that it, baseball's been up and down. I mean, when I moved here in two thousand and eight, they won the state championship.
Yeah, that was Mark Gordon that quit it.
Yeah. So it really, to me, it's what we, in order to solve all the sports from the thing, it's what you're talking about with the middle school and, and the farm teams. And if you go and look at the communities, that even the small communities are really successful with the continuing sports program. It really starts in the stuff that's outside of the school. It starts in the lower kids getting involved. I know Wyndham has a great soccer program, but there is, I used, next to my property, there's the big fields at Gambo there. There's eighteen or twenty teams that play youth soccer every Saturday and Sunday down there. Which then provisioned by the time kids get disinterested in there, comes into your, your varsity team. So maybe, I don't know what we can do to encourage in the community more, that the funnels start bigger down at the, down in the lower part, so that that, by the time they get here, it's just, I'm, I'm sure it's difficult.
So, to dump tail on Chris's statement a little bit. It's fairly common that there is a connection with the town or implantations, if they have any recreation department programs. And I think it's somewhat unreasonable to expect the school to do it alone. Because it just doesn't work that way pretty much anywhere else. So if it makes any sense at all to connect up with the town and if we start up a recreation director or whatever, to see if we could connect that dot and what those two entities could do to support each other. Uh, but it's really all about the feeder programs. I mean, I'm just a nationally ranked tennis player. And I can tell you, if you get larger numbers down low and it's going to pyramid up, but there'll be some dropouts along the way, but the larger the numbers down below, the more that will remain from getting to the top of the heap.
I echo that. I think rec is super important. I mean, I started playing sports when I was four, five. And it gets ingrained in you at a young age and then you become interested. You can't expect these fifth, sixth graders to be dropped into basketball, baseball, never have played before, no skills. They're in a very, you know, hard time of life going through puberty. They're already feeling judged and to just start basketball from never fighting before. It's hard for a middle school kid. So I can't echo more that it's super important to get the town involved.
Absolutely. And for example, I've seen years, I mean, they didn't have a chance not to ski in Rangeli. They, they don't know any other way of life. That's what they do. That's their culture, is their life. So we try to take some of that philosophy and see if we can expand it.
I will say the town rec department does a great job with the, I mean, baseball kids. We have so many kids that play baseball. And you're right, like, when you bring Sean, last year, we had some kids that hadn't played baseball. And practicing the gym in the spring with kids who don't know how to play baseball is.
Dangerous.
Yeah, some blood, bruises, yeah. We are looking at the credit piece. Uh, we started that conversation last year. I think it makes a lot of sense for, like, we just, we have to figure out how to make it a policy with two or three sport athletes. Yeah, I agree. It's a community thing. It's a school, community, having coaches and programs. And, you know, it's a different, I was talking to Sean today and I look at it from my perspective, like, kids, like, when our parents, so the kids aren't the same. Society changes and you know, like, like with people that travel and stuff, like Sean, when we played baseball, your coach basically told you what time the practice was and you're like, yep.
Yeah.
I'll be there, whether it's thunder, lightning. But now it's more like, well, you know, I've got this going on, or I've got this going on. Can I reschedule for this day? Well, that game doesn't work for me on that day. So there's a lot more pieces. I think people, families are more busy, you know, so you're trying to weave schedules into very busy schedules. So it's different, like back in the old days, like, oh, you didn't, like, no standard. Coach's like, you're practicing tomorrow. You're like, okay, coach. And you know, now it's, it's more, it's a different environment that we operate in and to weave all those things together, put a spring. And it's tough for us to put a spring season together. So I'm psyched about baseball because we are a vacation town and a lot of people leave. You know, and we've lost coaches because of that. They were close to committing. And they said, what do you mean, like a third of your team's gone for two, three weeks? And they're like, I don't know, I think I might take a different coaching job because it. And they said, what do you mean, like, a third of your team's gone for two, three weeks? And they're like, I don't know, I think I might take a different coaching job because the kids will be there. So there's so many things, like, we can't do anything, like, people work, and in April, it's mud season, they travel. You know, how do we work around that? And it goes up and down. I think you'll see, like, high school numbers of kids in school go up and down. Mark Gordon's baseball program back in the, like, 2006 or so. Those kids played Little League, they won a state championship, but then it, like, faded away. I think you'll see our group coming through middle school, we have a bubble in high school, but there could be a wall behind it. Some of the small schools in the area that have had very successful programs, we've called them, like, what are you gonna do? They're like, well, we did this, but FYI, next year or the year after, that's like, where we don't know what we're gonna do. So it, it is, I don't know all the answers. We're trying. I've put more energy into sports this year than it seems like anything. Trying to figure this out. So, yeah. We're trying. And so volleyball, we have kids playing volleyball. They're going to, what is it, Lindsey knows more about volleyball.
So it's something we had tried, they had tried to put into just as a intramural in between seasons. Last year, I think, the year before, but then there was COVID, so they weren't able to do it. So they tried to revamp it this year. Some teams have unfortunately backed out, so I'm not sure that there's going to be as many teams doing it, but it's just our round robin, like, you have to have three girls and three boys playing. So in order to be on the court, so I'm not sure, I think they're playing at least two games.
Maybe come to practice. Yeah.
It would be this weekend.
We've had open gyms. Nancy, I don't, is Nancy putting it on? Is anyone?
Nancy is working, working.
With the bowling.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're doing bowling. And so, but this is like how they have bowling at Bowling Alley, free bowling, free pizza, free french fries. Host it in the school, everything. No, listen, first, first, first one, this is how many kids went?
Yeah.
Zero. Zero kids.
So it was PA.
They started with high school students to begin with. She, I just wanted to kind of figure that out. And then just especially because there was nothing going on in, for the, for winter sports for them. And it ended up game four altogether. And, yeah, and then there was a look at, like, should we look at opening it up to middle school just to get more kids? But I think,
And you're not
There was a little better turnout for a couple of the other ones, but, and also that I think can be good to that, as part of that once they get there, but. Yeah, even like, it was like, and just, just to get kids, like, free food, just if anything, go for the food and just whatever. And it was still, it was tough. It was tough to get kids to do that, so.
Yeah, that's an infomercial for opening yourself rather than the hire, the people who already are setting their ways culturally and with their sports habits to the younger, the younger kids.
Should call the parents because
Don't parents are talking.
Well, we, Sheila was kind of the head on this one, and she had, you know, reached out to Jeff and I, just, you know, put the signups up. We did, and we had the numbers. I mean, unfortunately, kids can say that they're gonna come and then sometime they don't. I mean, we had four or five kids signed up to go, so we were like, hey, that's great. And then none showed up on that particular first day. So I think sometimes that's the hardest thing, especially when it comes to sports. And this is why, you know, that's easy to do. If we had do this and like commit to a season, we've talked about this before, like, say, on a team thing, and then nobody shows up, then we're in trouble. So like, this is why it's always so important that we have the numbers.
That was a long-winded principle. I apologize.
Yeah. I gotta turn the picture specifically to you because I know you share.
Um, just to talk on that whole bowling thing, in all honesty, we all signed up. And then we realized what the first day was, and we're like, we, none of us could make it that day. And we just, we, none of us were able to make it. But we did talk with Nancy on the last day, and we were telling her that Friday works for almost all of us because we were able to, like, kind of build up a small group that does want to go on those days, like, getting ride, like, for one student, like, goes to Mcgalloway, goes. And we were able to, like, get a ride for her to and from, or she stays the night with one of us so she can go. And we really enjoyed the bowling. It's really fun. We were, we were honestly seriously talking about, we should ask about having a team because we realized it was much more fun than we had anticipated, but.
It was a team years ago.
Yeah.
Jager.
Yeah.
Would you like to re-tour down on things that are occurring in school?
Um, the Puerto Rico trip is in 24 days. And we're really excited for that. And juniors made more progress today with prom planning. We found out from the current owners of the farmhouse that they're gonna let us use their venue for free this year. Kind of like as a trial run before they have a big wedding the next weekend. So they're letting us use the venue for free, and they're providing for drinks for us as well.
Awesome.
Not alcoholic.
I'm really hopeful. The only thing I have to add is, last week on Friday, we had NHS applications, and I know that a lot of kids were able to apply this year, so we'll probably know in the next couple of weeks if I'm in, so. And then what I had to add is that student council had a pizza party with the third grade for bringing the most food to the food drive that we had. So that was fun. We all got to sit at their desks and eat pizza with them. And then the other thing I, other thing I have that I is not set in stone is the NUIAs that all of us high school students are so excited for, that are supposed to be either next week or the week after that.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Oh, thank you for, I completely spaced that. We have to do it twice. It, the state, like, fixed it and then they broke it again. I don't want some states on here. It, yeah, so the NUIA was our assessment, and now the NUIA is still the state assessment, but they made a new one called the NUIA three-year assessment. And the data is not going to be available immediately. So yes, we are doing a school-wide NUIA this month to get a data capture for the whole school, and then three through eight. And 10th grade will have to take it again in May for the state.
Four different software deployments.
Yes.
And
What did I say?
I, I just had a question about, you were mentioning that you guys were discussing the, the earning the credit for doing sports. I have, I just have a little question regarding that. If this continues to be pursued, when do you think it would be finalized, whether or not that could be a thing?
It'd probably be the summer we get it into the handbook. I've already talked to Ms. Delaney about it. And I don't know, we'd have to make, like, how many seasons, how many, you know, years do you have to do? But this summer it'd probably go into a handbook, and then we could start looking at it next year.
I also have another question after that. Would it, if, if hypothetically, if it were to be that you
You need this PE credit.
Well, well, I have to make it up on my own time with this upcoming year because I don't have time to do it in school. I have to do like a after school program, which kind of is a little I'm a junior too, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully next year, and I would like to do, like, jump, like, the look back a little bit.
Um, I just wanted to ask, in that situation, would it be possible for students who do dance to have that count as well?
Yep, we're gonna look at all the iPhone, so, yeah, because we can work with Pam, well, you know, maybe just launch the app. So, yeah, hopefully this summer, so.
Thank you.
And I think it makes so much sense, because I would say in one season of, like, soccer practice, you probably do way more cardio than you do, like, an entire year of PE. I mean, just a amount of running you do. So it makes sense that we, um, do this, yeah. Don't worry. Gotcha.
I'm looking outside and I'm seeing snow and wind blowing, and I'm thinking, let's kind of try to expedite our meeting a little bit so that we can get out here. And get out of here.
So I should have my report.
I'm sorry, what? So let's move to the committee reports, and we'll begin with policy. Kathy.
Kathy's via Google Meet. I think she hears us. Kathy, you hear, you with us? You just have to unmute yourself. Um, that should be in the bottom left of your toggle bar.
Okay, is that it? Can you hear me now?
Good job, Kathy.
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. All right, just very quickly, we had our, uh, policy committee meeting on March 6th. And we accomplished a lot. We have two action items on today's agenda, and our next meeting is going to be, let me see, Monday, April 3rd. Okay?
Thanks, Kathy.
Moving on to finance, Chris.
Yeah, our finance committee met today. We looked at the, the final draft of the budgets and voted accordingly to have it brought to the board, to be accepted by the board. And then will be voted on to send it the next step at our April meeting. The administration will produce the budget as it was approved from finance. Upload that to the website with a narrative explaining the articles or a presentation, and then Georgia will do a formal presentation at our April meeting, at which point that will be loaded as well. So public will have, they're welcome to come and comment at the April meeting. And they're welcome to come, obviously, to the June meeting where we vote on each of the articles and comment then. They're welcome to submit their questions and concerns and comments, either by, they want to submit them ahead of time and email. They can email them to Georgia or even myself, and we can get those compiled and try to address them at the April meeting. It's a good budget, I think. There was a lot of work put into it by the administrative staff. And the team overall as a whole, with the focus being to make sure we can maximize as much as we can for the classroom, as well as deal with the challenges of the world that we live in now with inflation and increasing costs, especially in the utilities sector, as well as trying to address the needs for the students with positions that will help with technology and meet the needs as students go forward on all levels, so that when they leave our institution, they are better prepared for the world outside. And I think there's a good balance in there. We've also took an extensive look through the budget to determine where things historically have trapped, looking back several years, and making adjustments so that we can maximize dollars and minimize increases to keep a good, effective budget. I think it's quite spelt, in, in the sense that it's
Slimmed and trimmed.
Slimmed and trimmed. And hopefully, as you know, a budget's an educated guess, and hopefully we've made that, and it will, we'll get to where we need to go for the next year. There's a lot of uncertainties and it's hard to budget. But I think we're, I think we did, the team did a really good job on the administrative side. And I'm happy where we're at.
And special kudos to Georgia and Ron Sam in that process because they did a terrific job. That meeting on the 11th, our school board meeting is the 11th of April. Do you know the date for the community meeting, Chris, in June?
It's traditionally my birthday, but, so it's
Do you support? Get that on our calendar.
That's my birthday, that's right. So it'll probably be June 6th, to be my guess.
It'll be June 6th.
Because
June 6th, yeah.
Election Day is the 13th. Where the budget is then voted on.
Right.
And then and unfortunately, I will not be there.
Can you refresh my memory on that June meeting, Chris? Is that in lieu of a board meeting? Do we have a board meeting?
We usually have a board meeting on the 14th, which would be the day after the election, so that we can certify the votes.
That's what it was.
So that the proper things can be sent out to everybody and signed multiple copies. And I apologize if I am going to be in Portugal on the 6th.
Well, I wouldn't apologize about that.
No.
Good for you. So I'm going to see our, our dear friend Z Anderson, who used to be at the We're actually going to that town.
So what? Oh, Georgia, okay, thank you.
But I feel like we're in good hands. You do not need me to, in fact, the meeting will probably be 30 to 45 minutes shorter.
You said it, I didn't.
So just so you guys are, are aware of the process, new board members especially, so April 11th, the budget will go to the board on May 9th. That's when you guys will sign the warrants. And then it will go to, the public hearing will be on the 6th. And then the towns will vote on the 13th.
Towns vote on the 13th, and then we'll have a board meeting, probably our June board meeting will be on the 14th.
To the Wednesday.
To, to, to ballot, to finalize the process.
We have to certify the votes. We'll receive all the votes from the towns, we'll redo them, and then certify.
So that's kind of a heads up for you guys because that's a Wednesday. And so that's a little bit of a deviation from our traditional typical board days. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. Moving on to facilities, Danielle.
Okay, we met on March 9th. We talked about saving the parking lot and our road, and also the sidewalk. Jeff is going to find out if that is the town's sidewalk for ours. We think we can just repair and seal the parking lot, and he's gonna look at the cost for redoing the road. The middle school science room, we originally had a proposal of $25,000. After a lot of figuring out, we got it down to $17,339. And we approved that, so they are ordering it. The update on the bus is for a brand new bus at Cressy. It is $84.9. Jeff is going to talk to the VLM about that, so you can get the price down. Chris is also looking into other options for buses to buy a used one. Hopefully, as soon as we hear any numbers, we're just going to meet and make a decision because the bus has to be purchased by September. Also, we discussed getting Jeff a new tractor. So we think the funds, the funds were put in the budget years ago, like, '20, '21, somewhere around there. We're gonna look to see where that money was put. And then purchasing a bus. Or not a bus, I'm sorry, a tractor. We're also purchasing a bus. But we're also going to look into getting a motor deck for it.
Okay.
And a loader. And
Is this bus the 14 person bus?
It's the 14 passenger, and it's something that's, and it, we have certain guidelines we have to follow when purchasing it. Like, what, it has, you know, Chris would
Yeah, so I think it's MF, SAB is the requirement code, and we're looking at between a 14 and a 20. We average historically 11 to 12 foster tech students, and so a traditional 10-passenger van won't be adequate, and we want to make sure all students have the ability. This will also be excellent because our goal is that somebody who doesn't have a commercial license to drive, but can adequately monitor, so a coach could take a team or
It would be funny for a ski team.
Ski team, or if, you know, when a music group goes to Six Flags, and then instead of renting multiple vans, we'd
And Danielle, you mentioned a September deadline, and that's because this money is asset funds and it has to be expended by them.
Yes.
So that's why there's sort of a, a need to expedite that process.
We had one originally, it was sold out, Bonamico's.
Right.
And ever since then, we've been
Been scrambling.
So we reached out to other options.
The car dealership chose his alma mater rather than
Also, the wall for the middle school science room, we are putting bids out and advertising out at town now, because we have had no one, no interest.
Really?
So, so keep us updated on that.
Okay, thank you. The curriculum committee, Kathy, again.
I have to unmute myself again. The curriculum meeting is just gonna be in either May or June, so at the end of the semester to see the progress. We only meet, we're gonna meet two or three times a year anyway, so. That's, did you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we did, Kathy. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. The negotiations.
Joan, would you like to speak? I'm mute.
I'll let you do it this time.
Gee, thanks.
You're welcome. We have been meeting weekly since, I believe, the middle to end of November. There's still progress being made, and there are still items that we're working to come to compromise on. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 3:30.
I appreciate that. Okay, moving on to action number eight, appointments, resignations, nominations, and transfers.
Yes, unfortunately, I have a resignation. Katie Willis is going to be leaving us. She asked me to read a brief letter of resignation. She said, "I want to start by thanking RLRS for the opportunity to work as an academic interventionist for the past two years. I have greatly enjoyed and appreciated the opportunities that I have had working with students and staff. My position was unique in the way that I was able to work with a wide variety of learners. In one moment, I was teaching a first grader digraphs and fonts. And the next moment, I would be working with 6th through 8th graders building robots out of electric toothbrushes. I've learned so much about myself as a teacher in my career here at RLRS. I started out working here eight years ago as an ed tech in special education and learned very quickly that I needed a whole new level of skills and flexibility and patience. I have built relationships with students, families, staff, and the community, and I am thankful for the support and care that I have felt from you all. We will take all that, I will take all that I've learned and build and carry it with me wherever my family ends up. My last day in the building will be March 31st. And I would just like to say, Katie, we feel the same way about you."
Let's move on then to our action items. We actually have three policies that we need to take action on. Kathy, I'll turn it back to you, so you can walk us through those, those three policies.
Kathy, don't forget to unmute yourself. Kathy.
I forgot, sorry. I believe we only have two policies. Yeah, we only have two policies, and then the school year thing. The first policy, GCFB, we are just changing the language of the last paragraph to, to match MSMA. This is a required policy, by the way. And we did that because we felt their language was more succinct and to the point. We liked it better. So, that was, that's the first one, GCFB. Everybody hearing me?
So can I have a motion to accept the changes to that policy?
So moved.
So move a second? Okay, any questions, discussion? All those in favor? So moved, okay. Moving on then to the next policy.
The next policy, IHBAA-R, again, a required policy. Wait a minute. We, oh, I know, you have two policies here. You have our current RLRS policy, and then you, we have the MSMA policy. And we decided to, and I encouraged it, I have to say, to just revise ours to be in sync with MSMEA, because first, it's a little more struck, it's a little better structured and easier to follow. And also, when comparing the two policies, it's extremely difficult when they're this long and have the different points that they're trying to make in different areas. So it'd be much better for the next policy chair to have the same as MSMA. That way, when they make changes, we'd be able to catch them right away. Okay?
You're requesting that we shift from, from the current policy to the MSMA policy.
Yeah, they're basically the same, it's just the MSMA one. MSMA one is, it's, it's better organized and easier to follow.
Can I have a motion then to substitute the MSMA policy for our existing policy on IHBAA-R? Second? Second? Okay, any questions or comments? Just a-
Yeah, I just want to know if there's any significant difference in the content or intent of the policy that's different from the existing policy.
Did you hear that question, Kathy?
There is a just-
Yes, I did. No, not, not that I was able to see. It's just, like I said, it seems to be better organized, but it has all the same bullet points, and, and each one seems to address the same, the same issues. And like I said, it's a required policy, so.
Chris?
Chris?
Page, first paragraph, applicable letters. Last line says, in brackets, "School unit's name, apostrophe S", so that should be changed to ours, U7.
I missed-
As far as for us-
Oh, damn!
I missed it.
I finally got one. Two years, I finally got one. But also too, is that since this is a new policy, the language at the bottom should just be adopted March 14th, 2023.
It's not a new policy. Chris, it's not a new policy. It's basically the same policy, reorganized, that's all. It's basically says, both policies say the same thing.
Then we should adopt the, yeah, where we're pressing it.
We're just adopting, we're revising, we're revising our policy to the wording in the MSMA policy.
Why does this not apply?
One person, that time, Chris.
Well, if that was the case, then it should have been cross-lined through, and we should have had a cross-out and then everything put, like it was revised. If a global replacement of the entire policy, however it is rearranged, we're taking the new MSM and putting it in. So to me, we're, we're swapping it out completely, so it really should have been a rescind and a replace. I'm not going to die on a hill, but if it was going to be, if it's adopted and is changed, then it should be, every paragraph should be lined out and then replaced with the pieces that were there, because we're doing it back.
For the purposes of our meeting, yes, that should have happened, because I can see any difference.
Right.
Um, we've done-
That's what we've done in the past.
Right. I understand that.
Kathy is-
So, what, what-
Kathy's got it.
What you're asking is for the notation that should occur at the end on page four, is that correct?
Well, let's see what Kathy has to say on that, and then we can decide.
No, I just want to say that we've, we've done this many, many times before, where we have revised our own policy, the same policy, to match the wording in the MSMA policies. And we've just, completely just flipped over to the MSMA. We haven't done all that, it's usually, it would be an impossible task, at least for me, anyway, to, to try and-
All Chris is saying is that the new policy that's being proposed to replace the old policy indicates on the bottom that we've already adopted it as a board, and that we've then revised it on three dates.
Right.
It should not say that, it should say that we've adopted it today.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
That's all I was going to say too, so.
Okay, was that what I was going to say? Yeah, Kathy, all that, all that they're saying is that that adopted October, that all that verbiage at the bottom needs to, to go. And it just needs to say, "Adopted March 13th, 2023". 14.
Well, that, that's really not the case.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to retable it until everybody understands the next line.
Whoa, we have a motion on the floor now.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor now. We have a motion on the floor now, so let's take a vote of motion on the floor. Johanna?
Well, it seems as if we've already adopted this policy on a date, according to this document.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, Kathy, I think, let's take a vote on the initial motion that's on the floor, and then we will, we can make another motion about what we want to do with this, right?
Unfortunately, I think it's just a coffee and paste issue. The dates on the bottom of this match the dates on the policy that is in the, that we are, that's currently, yes.
It's currently in our-
Correct.
Want to follow mandatory procedure?
Yes.
To make more sense in this process, we're going to do a hearing, just have the person who made the motion rescind it.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Rather than going through the-
I agree, you're right, but I made a motion. Rescind it?
Not that you have to rescind it.
No, I'm, I agree. You're having rescinding your motion, okay. So, somebody make a motion about what they'd like to see happen with this policy. So this is what the-
Since, I make a motion since we are adopting the MSMA policy, that we change the two things, the school unit name in that paragraph so aforementioned.
Right.
And that we put that we adopted it as of March 14th, 2023.
Kathy, did you get that?
All right, then we'll have to-
Can I have a second?
I did. We have to then rescind our policy first, and then adopt this policy.
Okay.
I will amend my motion that we rescind the current policy, and that we adopt this one and record the date as today.
Okay.
I, I know. Okay, any more discussion on this? All those in favor? Kathy, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey Kathy.
And now we're moving on to the consideration of the 23, 24 school year. I apologize, like, I was, I thought that was a policy, I misread it. Okay, Georgia?
Well, I just would like, so we've gathered a little bit of data here, and so I just kind of like-
Georgia, can I just airject real quick?
Sure.
Did we receive two different calendars?
Both of the same.
No, it, well, it's just- I'm just making sure. That was an error, and you're asking that question. So we only received one proposal, so I got it. Okay.
You see one proposal, the difference between the two is one at the top says it's RTA approved. So I apologize for that.
Okay.
I'm sorry for any confusion with that.
I read it like three times. Same.
No, me too.
Sorry, I just wanted to know if I, that I wasn't-
This is driving me nuts, I'm like, what am I missing? It's like that game you play with five things.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You tested our brains. I didn't even realize it, and, and, and so this afternoon, that those both went out to you guys. So I, I am sorry.
None hurts. All right, so I just want to sort of speak to the data that came to me. The student council voted unanimously to start school before Labor Day. The RTA voted unanimously to start before Labor Day. And I did send out a survey to our parents, and the survey came back with 64 responses. 54.7% said that they would like to start August 30th, which is before Labor Day. 45.3% said, uh, chose option two, to start after Labor Day.
So it's like a 32, 20 minutes.
Chris, let's wait, let's, let Georgia finish, then you can answer your question. That's, that's the data that I collected.
I'm going to think those numbers will take place.
Sure, and I can give this to you, Roxanne, too. I mean, uh, V R, Rowena.
Long day?
Roxanne's sitting next to you.
It was, it was 54, 46.
It was actually, so it's 50, if I round it, it's 55 and 45.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to adopt the proposed school calendar?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Can we open it up?
I just have one comment, and just, you know better than I, but this obviously pushes back for the teachers, the pre-date that they have to show up to do all the pre-work or earlier openings, is that correct?
And that's what they prefer, that's what they want.
And that's well understood, and okay.
Yep, they basically want us to reply to that concern that we were here the same number of days last year anyway, before we started, and we want to start sooner.
And more.
And you guys, would you, would you like to speak? President of the student council voted unanimously about this, and I appreciate your voice in the process.
Really, it was just a major conflict between college courses and how they aligned their semesters with ours, because they would start a week before. So people were starting college courses before school began, and they had zero support from many teachers or explanations on how they were supposed to make it work, and they're not understanding, like, where am I supposed to go to post my discussion post? Where can I do my assignments? How do I even register for this class? They, they were struggling with that. And as for Cheyenne and I, we both started math courses in January, which, and they ended up starting a week before our semester ended. So we were studying for a, like, a pretty big math test for our Algebra II class while we were starting our study college course, which was a lot of confusing.
So there was a, really a mismatch for you guys, or you seconded the schedule.
Yes, some students even dropped out of college courses because they were too stressful trying to juggle with these two or two.
And it's just all, it's very, very confusing too, because I feel like with college classes, you really want to like, look at, you know, what exactly it's all about, and like, especially if that's the first time you've ever taken one. If you're trying to finish your high school math, it's, it's way too confusing, I think.
Other comments, Chris?
As you know, I've been a big supporter of, starting after Labor Day. You know, it looks like the ducks are kind of in a row to try to do it before, and RTA's approved it, the council's approved it. I don't know why everyone would run more time off on a rainy, rainy day in June versus, you know, the warm days of September, but not my call. When we did this survey before, it was 85% of the parents that came back to us that said they wanted to start after Labor Day. So I'm surprised it was 35 out of 64 responses. But that's what, one-third of the population, it's not that full, big there. So I'm disappointed that we didn't at least have a proposal that showed us what the Labor Day schedule would look like if we did start after Labor Day, because I've asked for that. Every year, I've been on the board since 2008, and for us not to have that, at least to look at, is quite disappointing for me.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Yeah, well, I saw you shaking your head.
I disagree, I, I agree with Chris. I understand everybody's feelings on it, but I thought we had agreed to at least see one of each, regardless. I thought, I was under the stand, understanding that as a board, we requested to see both options regardless. And maybe that was my misunderstanding, but I would have just liked to see both of them on the table. So I'm a visual person, I'd like to be able to compare and contrast and see where we may be able to move things and change things. And with just one revision, that makes it kind of difficult.
I know that one of the issues, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Joan has had her hand raised, so I'd like to-
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
It's okay. Joan, if you can unmute yourself.
I believe in addition to the problems with the college courses, there also is some discrepancy between the students trying to take classes at Mount Blue. I think it's important for us to be consistently trying to make the education for the kids the best possible thing. I think it's all very nice to have a vacation, and a lot of these people take vacations in April, when we are having school. So I don't see how it can be such a big problem for them to spend a couple of extra days in, in the early part of the fall in school. If the kids want it, the teachers want it. There may be lovely days in September, but they're also lovely on Saturday and Sunday. I think we should stick with what the teachers and the students are recommending.
Yes, going on Danielle.
And, how many days were there in between? We were just talking about your math, math final for-
Whole motion.
Like a whole week. And we're talking about two days. You still wouldn't be-
Do you still want to be lined up? Do we have the schedules for Mount Blue, Foster Tech, and for the college courses that are starting?
Not board approved yet.
No, they start, they start, they have this.
Because that, that really is something I think we need to even make a decision. Because that's, that's, everybody's argument on this is that they need these things to align, right?
Uh, Rowan, Row, and then.
Well, Seth, you go first.
Deb also has her hand raised.
Seth trumps me.
I, so Deb, go right there.
I'm saying what?
Deb, you can go. Deb raised her hand too.
Thank you. Um, I would, I would second. Oh, I, I think I am. I would second, uh, I would second Joan's comments as well. I think when we, when we signed on to take on the responsibility of being board members, one of the things we said we would do was look at students' interests, put their interests first. And if the kids are saying this is when we want to begin and the teachers are supportive of that, then that's what we need to do as a board.
Yes, I'm going to go to Row, then I'm going to go to Shaw, then I'm going to come back to Johanna. Start with that.
Um, yeah, just so, just the, the not having two drafts, I'm not here and there, but basically what it would do is if you look at the last week of school, jump, like those last two things, kind of add two days, but jump graduation to the fifteenth. Because we'd have to safely, to be safe with that calendar, if we're going to come into that week, graduation has to bump ahead a week. And to the, it just, it sets us off, basically from all the other schools like Mount Blue and stuff. You, I can't remember the exact start date of U M F K. It started that week before. So basically, any kid with U M F K or fosters is still going to start before Labor Day. It just basically offsets everything, single thing from other schools by a week. That's kind of what it does.
Thank you.
Um.
Row.
Yeah, and what happened this year is actually, we wanted to have, somebody was interested in doing a STEM camp here and there's another summer camp I heard of where we're still in school when summer camps are starting. So that's, I don't know here how many kids, but that's just, basically just shift everything a week. We're offset a week.
I just wanted to speak to the college classes for a second, because I've been responsible with these girls, especially getting them into their college courses this semester. Um, so when we say it's only two days, so even if those college classes start on the Monday and we don't start school till the Thursday, that first week of the college courses is when the kids have to get in, log in for the first time. Some of our sophomores are going to take their first college classes this upcoming semester. Um, so I think if you ask Angie and Cheyenne that just took their first college classes, what that process would have felt like without any help, even though it's only two days for us, if I had gotten them on a Thursday, got them logged in, sat down with them, showed them the syllabus, really walked them through the platform, um, versus not seeing them until the following Tuesday, when they've already had an entire week of class, those are the kids that are going to drop that class. So I know it only looks like two days, but I just want to really say those two days are critical for our college kids.
Um, thanks, Row. Seth really got to my point, but Kate had uh her hand up as well, so I'll let her go.
Um, I just wanted to speak to, oh, can you guys hear me okay? Um, I just wanted to speak to the days conflicting with Mount Blue. Um, and so when RTA reviewed both proposals of the calendar, um, we made sure that those five um days that have to, we can only have five asynchronous or days where we don't meet their same calendar. Um, and the two proposals as of right now both meet those requirements. So I just wanted to point that out, even though they're, I know they're not in front of you and I understand what you're saying. I'm visual. Um, but um to echo Deb and Joan and um the student council representatives on the board, um, I do think it's extremely important um as an educator that uh we listen to students and we, as educators, are there able to support our students as well, especially those students taking college classes too.
Johanna.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
First, can you help me understand the calendar? So June tenth. What is the E note?
It's an early release day.
Okay, so S is snow day?
Yes.
So those are your built-in snow days. So the students come for a half-day on the tenth. That is the last day of school.
If you don't have any snows yet.
If there's snow days.
Yeah.
Obviously, everybody knows that I'm a proponent for starting after Labor Day. Um, we're a tourist town. The, and this is another, I'm going to throw a wrench in everyone's little thought process here. Um, we just came off February break. I, selfishly, I did not get to see my children because we're in a tourist town and we explode. Um, so I would, I, I would love to see a different proposal here, maybe with hypothetically moving some vacation time, so it doesn't necessarily line up when our little tourist town is exploded with people. Um, because we're running our shops, we're working our second, our third jobs to make this little town move forward. And unfortunately, that comes at the sacrifice of a lot of parents spending time with their children. So I am disappointed as well that there was no second proposal here. Um, this is just kind of a reversion back to where we started from last year when we opened this discussion.
Um, back to the college things. I, I, I think everyone's missing my, like, points of it, because I was asking, because she said there was like a whole week of her classes overlapping, like, her high school class and her college class. And she was stating that starting earlier would have, that it would have made them line up, but my point was that us starting two days earlier still is not lining them up. So if that's our purpose of it, then maybe line everything up, like you're that.
Traditionally, they have. In the past, it had never been an issue.
That's why I was asking, like, what, when do the college courses start? I'd like to know when the college courses.
They start in the week, the last week of August.
So they're, they need to be in their class on, do we know what day?
It's usually the Monday of that week.
But that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
She's talking about after the first semester, because it's like a third quarter.
Yeah, so our, our quarters, nothing lines up. I'm saying that our stuff lines up anyways, but doesn't.
Chris, I haven't called in yet.
So my point was that it's, none of it's lining up. So our, like, I understand the concern, I understand her concern completely. And I'm saying, if we're going to change things to accommodate specific, not just specifically this, but this is one of the things, then why are we not accommodating the whole thing into our calendar? Because this is something that is troublesome for them. So we're going to move an entire calendar and make it start two days earlier so they can start school on time, but then it doesn't accommodate the rest of the year. Does that make sense? Because the college course starts ten, or a whole week before our school ends.
I understand what you're trying to say. I understand what you're trying to say.
So hold that thought and to add to Danielle's comment by way of questioning Row. You're already going to be at work a week ahead of time before that two days earlier starts. So the obvious trigger question there is, are you available even before those two days starts earlier?
Oh.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to know.
Well, no, I mean. So it's a wash.
Well, no, I mean, if I have, if we have students in the building for a student day, then we do our workshops and those workshop days are before. If we're having our workshop days that Thursday, Friday, what's a Thursday, Thursday, Friday, then I'm not available with the college students, because that's, this year, that was the solution, was be available and let the kids come to you if they need to come in. But we're doing workshops and trainings and, but it wasn't a good option this year.
Okay, so that answers my question.
Yeah.
Um.
Somebody on, on Zoom.
Yep, Kate Filbert got her hand raised or has her hand raised. Okay, you're good to go if you're ready.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to speak to um the small businesses um and coming from a family who had owned a business and now owning my own business. Um, but also being an educator, I understand the struggles completely trying to balance um school and work and home life. Um, but unfortunately, Joe, and please don't take this offensively in any way, but um that can't come at the expense of all kids because we're here. The teachers are there to educate students and students are there to learn. So even though it makes family life and work life difficult on the outside, I totally hear you with that. Um, I, I also want to identify that, like, that's, that's a personal and family responsibility on, on my end, on your end, I totally um, on, you know, that's, that's a personal choice that we all have to, to, to balance and it's not always easy and I totally, totally get what you're saying. Um, but I think that, again, trying to listen to what students are asking for um is really important and what educators are asking for unanimously.
Chris, you've got something to say and I, I, I should cut you off, but I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm just trying to help with translation, because it wasn't, it wasn't significant. The point that we're trying to figure out is, we can do the things in the beginning to fix the first part, but what, how are we going to coordinate the, this, between the second and third quarter? This is what they were talking about, unless you were taking Algebra II at the middle of August.
We take first vacation away, put March vacation in, so I can see what my kids.
But the, what I'm trying to understand is, when they explained, they said, well, we're wrapping up Algebra II, that was second quarter. Am I wrong? And we're going into third quarter. So we really have to coordinate our third quarter to line up with the college when they go back to school.
Could she respond to that, please?
My, my whole thing with that is actually what I want to talk about. My understanding is that if, I suppose it's a question, if we were to start after Labor Day, would that move the ending and beginning of new quarters a week ahead?
That's what Seth was getting.
So by starting two days earlier, that moves the ending and beginning of quarters to align with the semesters of college courses, which is
That's right.
the main issue with, it's just when semester one ends, semester two begins, we were a week ahead of that rather than being in time with that. Not, it doesn't necessarily align with the beginning of college courses in August. I would agree with that, but it does help align the semesters altogether.
So it aligns it in the middle.
Yeah.
And it's, you said historically, Row, this has never been a problem.
Exactly.
Never.
Never.
Seth, and then back to, to, to Chris and then to Seth.
Okay, so I don't, we can do whatever we want to do, just it's this, we've never had that problem. We moved our calendar and not many districts started as late as we do, so it just, it did offset everything. When we set quarters, we count days, I think it's like twenty-one or twenty-two, I shoot for. I'm guessing if we recounted our calendar this year, I would probably pop the end of the quarter back to the previous Friday. You know, sometimes it's a wash in the middle of the week. It might have pushed it. We don't always have U M F K scheduled, but like I said, we've never had really any of these problems. It makes sense. I know it doesn't always make sense from outside of the building. Inside the building, it makes the most sense to start before Labor Day. Teachers are all here working in August. We get the kids in. The kids that are going fosters aren't starting school before everyone else. I think they do more school days than the rest of the kids. Um. It just, it just works. Graduation is not on the seventeenth of June. We get our kids, you jump all of that back. Um, and as far as the, like I was saying today, you know, the employment piece, well, if we start before um Labor Day, we lose some people, but now our kids are in school a whole week when probably ninety percent of all the other schools are going to be closed and parents are going to start their vacations. A range will fill up while our kids are still in school, I think. Um, it just works. It does work. I guess we could, I mean, it's just count, but as far as those end of the quarter days, we just count days. And I'm almost certain if we had started before, I would have counted days out in that, in the quarter, everything would have jumped back probably to a different Friday.
Okay, I would accept.
Can't promise that.
And Danielle, and then I'm going to call for a vote on the motion.
Okay, so I apologize, I might be dumb with this and not able to follow, but the old, the calendar we just had this year, the quarter ended on the third Friday of January, the third quarter, which, the second quarter ended on January nineteenth, the third quarter, which said, supposedly that was a week, there was an overlap between the college class and that. The calendar proposed for this year, for twenty twenty-four, is going to end, well, this year it ended on the twentieth, after three full weeks in January. This proposed calendar, it ends on the nineteenth, after three full weeks in January. So I guess I'm wondering, Danielle's question is, how would we solve the second quarter student who's now taking college courses, not having the stressful one week and people dropping out and skydiving and those things? So I want to try to get this figured out so that we can do it right. I mean, does that mean we need to start earlier? Do we need to eliminate a workshop day and move it to the spring? These are the questions that, because otherwise, to me, on paper mathematically and logically, it doesn't look any different. It shows the nineteenth this year, last year, this past year was the twentieth. So it don't look like we fixed that. I mean, if it was the twelfth instead of the nineteenth, then I'd say, okay, we solved it, but we have, from what I see here. So please explain.
Danielle?
I just, I would just like to, do we know when college courses end? For, for the year? Like, when they're finished?
May.
May? And foster type.
I, I guess, I guess the only comment I'm going to make, because I don't have as big a stake in the game as many of you that are sitting around the table, I don't have children at school right now. So, um, is that I trust that if the RTA approved this calendar, wants this calendar, and if the student council approved this calendar and wanted this calendar, and I've been told by a number of students in the building, they feel very strongly about that, that that's good enough for me as a school board member to think that they're in a better position knowing the flow of their year and the needs that they have um to accept their recommendation. That's all I'm going to say. I want to call a vote on this motion to accept the calendar. All those in favor of accepting the proposed calendar?
Um. Yeah, so we have Kathy, Joan.
Kayla, is your hand up or not? Your hand is up.
Well, I need, I don't need names, do I, or do I just need?
Oh, sorry.
How many, how many folks on, on, uh?
Uh, everybody on the Google Meet has their hand up.
Okay, Bob, myself, and Kayla. Is that a quorum?
Oh, geez. Did I do me a name? So I'm sorry.
Yeah, I figured. Uh, so we have Kathy, um.
Do you have a calculator in there if you have that?
Kathy?
We have Joan.
Yep.
We have Deb.
Deb.
We have Kayla, right?
Kayla. I'm shaking my head.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Bob.
Congratulations, but I am.
That, it would not fully be the score.
Is that enough?
I don't think so. I think we need five hundred if I'm reading this correctly, and that's only four thirty.
I, can I comment?
Yeah.
I would suggest that um we take this up again next month, but I think, I would, I'm not opposed to what the RTA and the students have proposed, but I don't see that there's an answer to the, you know, Mount Ford schedule and all that stuff. If that, if that information was here and that was locked in and set, then I would be more obliged to vote with the affirmative. But I'm abstaining because of lack of information. If you can provide it now, we can re, we can revisit the way.
I don't know if we're going to have, I don't know if I can get U M F K's semester dates. Next year probably can.
I would just.
I, we have, I don't need it.
Let's take it until I vote.
That's a student.
And, yes.
Um, I just, I, 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 I agree, but my, it's just, my one concern is just as long as there isn't really too much stress regarding the college. That's my only input. And Cheyenne and I won't be able to participate in the next meeting because of COVID. That's, that's.
And, and what you're saying is here now, yes, huh? Yes?
Oh, my, I had a question concerning the whole calendar situation. Are we bringing this up at a later date about whether or not we should start before or after Labor Day, or is this about the stuff in the middle?
It's about a number of things, I think, of which before, after Labor Day is one of the issues. Then I think another issue is alignment with Foster Tech, alignment with college coursework, what the RTA wants, what the student council wants versus what the board is or is not going to accept. Bob?
I would just respectfully suggest that if your position on this isn't going to change, then uh it probably won't matter if you miss a meeting where this is an action item. I would suggest if you're not going to be here, for some reason your position does change, uh, whether significantly or not, and you could let us know in writing and we'll certainly, we certainly want that and take it and advise them.
And, yeah, just that. And I know a lot of teachers were going to be here to answer these kinds of questions and unfortunately, with the snowstorm, I think, I think that's why they're not with us too, because you just need to know that. There were a lot of people that were fish in hip. Johanna and then Chris. And then we're going to end this discussion. Yes?
I guess I would just like to be provided a little bit more information about the process of developing a school calendar, what the state criteria is, where I can see that, um, or if it can be provided to me. Um, just because I'm a person who likes to think outside the box and, and, and would actually physically like start moving stuff around on the calendar so that we can have a second calendar proposal.
You know, I recommend, Johanna, anybody who has a burning question about this calendar, who really wants something specifically answered, email that to Georgia so that she can come to that meeting prepared to answer those questions. I think that's really important. And I know we, this is the same sort of, ended up. And I know we, this is the same sort of, ended up being circular conversation that we had last year. And, um, without student, Chris, can I finish? Without student input or teacher, unfortunately, teacher input at that meeting, that's all I was going to say.
Well, I'm annoyed about saying that I don't support the students or the teachers with this. I do support.
I'm not saying that, Chris. I need to say.
Every year, I outline very specific criteria I expect to see for the calendar stuff. I've done it every year. It's no surprise. It's not a shock. I always ask for a before Labor Day and an after Labor Day calendar. I also ask for to have the entries of the Foster Tech and that. I just Googled, U M F K starts two twelfth and twenty-four. They start on January sixteenth. So does that make us coordinate, Seth?
Yeah.
Dude, I'd just like a little bit more homework, sorry, before you bring it to the board, so we don't have to go through any circular discussions, because we have the information.
Absolutely. Chris, my time. I got the last thing.
Okay, we'll be off, that will get us off like three days.
I want to give more information. What I suggest is, if you have a burning question about how this is, come back with two models of the calendar for the April meeting for our discussion, and if you have questions that you want answered prior to that, email them.
I've asked the same questions every year, Mary. I don't feel like I should have to do that in this board. I'm glad to do it.
Okay. I hear, I hear Chris saying he wants two versions of the calendar. He wants, and, and whatever else he's asked that he wants, that you could provide at the next meeting.
So I would say that based on the students starting, and the Core Kent starts, I assume they start the same first day as online, as they do there, then the second quarter needs to end in order to solve this problem, because that's a big problem. When I hear kids say, I'm not taking a college course because it's, I've got finals in my second quarter, that shouldn't happen.
Right, Rob, I know. I agree.
And if that means we have to move the two days, you'll probably get my vote for that.
Okay.
But in order to do that, that means the quarter needs to end on the twelfth of January, so that the sixteenth starts the third quarter, so that they.
That's fair that we have that information.
But my frustration is, and I'm not trying to single out, but I'm just like, my frustration is, if that was a real issue that they brought up and the administration failed about, then that should have been already addressed and handled in the, in the version that was sent to the RTA and voted on by the student council. And that's all I'm saying. And we wouldn't be having this discussion if we had those coordinated efforts. I think you'd had my vote. I can't speak for Danielle, but I can tell you you'd had my vote if that had been solved.
I, you would have had my vote too. And there was due diligence done on this, and it was presented to us as the options that were presented in the surveys, and that there were some parameters and some guidelines, like these are the things that we need to follow for those of us that don't.
If I can just say something, please, because I, I, I'm hearing about the Foster Tech piece, and I need to speak to that. Because this calendar is in alignment. I think Kate said that this calendar is in alignment with Foster Tech. So one of the things that's really, really important to consider when we're looking at calendar is, as a sending school to Foster Tech, we can't have more than five dissimilar days in their calendar. But Kate said in the other draft that it did comply with that as well, the other draft, though.
This, 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 this.
There is no other draft.
Yeah, there's only one draft.
No, I think we go to the other, oh, oh. Well, okay, so I apologize for not bringing, uh, you know, but that's not what we are proposing as a district. We're proposing this calendar. But I'm happy to bring an after Labor Day start calendar.
However, there was the survey that went out with the options starting before Labor Day and after Labor Day. If that's not clearly presented to people, how are people able to make an educated decision based on the one option that's being presented?
Well, I, I think one of the things that really sort of, um, hit home with a lot of families this year is they see where we're ending up our school year almost in July. And, and that's hitting home with them. So.
I think, I'm going to break to this, I'm breaking this conversation to the folks.
I did, Joan, Joan did.
Yeah, with due respect to this process, it, it, it's very obvious that we have a ways to go here on this issue.
Right, absolutely.
And the interest of that, I hope everybody's comfortable that we definitely need some more information here and some clarity in some areas. And that stated, I'm hopeful that we can work toward that, and I would like to, if the chairperson will agree to make a motion to adjourn with that copy, we have support to do one of this.
Can I have one question first? So that was a lot of conversation. I tried to do as much as I could at the minutes.
Yeah, it's all right, Row.
I'll, I'll, I'll help you with that. I'll help you with that. Don't worry. I'll help you with that.
Can you meet with me after? Okay.
And really, she just, okay. We're, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn. So move. Thank you. All those in favor?
Jo, Joan really wanted to.
Oh, what?
That's what I was trying to raise my hand. Joan really wanted to say something.
Okay, Joan?
Yes, um, I was, I did. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
Oh, okay. Um, what I was wanting to say was, since we seem to be re, recalculating the calendar or recalculating multiple calendars, perhaps people might want to think about the possibility of having our February vacation be different from the rest of the state. It wouldn't be the end of the universe, and it would allow perhaps our kids to have more time on the slopes when they actually had their vacation, and it would allow the parents to spend a little more time with those kids when we're not overwhelmed with visitors. It isn't, it isn't an earth-shattering sort of thing, but it might solve some problems for some parents. And if we're redoing all these calendars, that might be a possibility to look at. Done.